Hello, everybody. Good morning. Welcome to the meeting. We are called to order. We are beginning. Looks like we've got a good list of folks coming in, kind of scanning for our group members. Okay, so why don't we start jumping in? Mary Ann, are you okay doing roll call again today to kick us off?
That will be fine. Do you want me to start?
Uh, yes, and I'm gonna drop in the chat a little checking question. So when your name gets called, oh, it did a weird thing. It looks huge. Um, when your name gets called, uh, the just kind of check-in question is, how do you define living wage? So today, we're going to be hearing presentations on procurement practices that can support living wages. We are being asked to come up with a recommendation on achieving living wages. And we had a bit of a discussion at the beginning of this process about what living wages were. Did not necessarily have great consensus, even an interest in using a different term. Uh, but this is the term we've been given for this body of work. And so when you do your little here, if you could just say a little bit about how you define living wages. So when we get to our recommendations, uh, we can be all trying to achieve at least something in the realm of the same goal. I'm gonna take some notes. I'm gonna put myself on mute. Uh, Mary Ann, go.
Svetta, are you here?
I am. Hi, everyone. Good morning. Um, what I consider living wage is an income that allows, you know, people and families to be able to live safe and sound in housing situation of their choice, um, to be able to afford healthy outcomes through food choices and other necessities to be able to get by, including childcare. Um, that's what comes to mind.
Okay, Debbie Dennis? I'll go on to Mercedes.
Morning, everybody. Mercedes here, and I define a living wage to be at least thirty percent of the average two-bedroom apartment.
Okay, Heather? Heather Fitch? Okay, I'll move on. Jonathan Groh?
It's, uh, it's Groh. Good morning. Um, a living wage I would define as something more than just a surviving wage or survival wage. It'd be one in which you could, um, you can provide for your family, provide for future generations, something that would allow you to thrive and prosper.
Tamara Henderson?
Good morning, everyone. Uh, I think I would define a living wage similar to what I've heard, but essentially, um, not needing to worry about paying all of your bills and your rent and your childcare and all the things.
Okay, Katrina? Katrina Holland? All right, moving on. Ganesh Madora?
Yeah, good morning, everybody. Don Ash Madora. Uh, good to see you. So I'm putting in the chat, uh, something called Alice for Oregon. This is Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed is what the acronym stands for. And so United Way National has calculated living wage, and this is a link to the report of what that looks like for Oregon. So a little to what's been mentioned so far, it's to cover basics. It's and then a little bit more. So it goes well beyond the federal poverty line. Um, but this is a really rich data set, so I would strongly encourage the group to consider probing this as a possible answer to the question.
Felicita?
Good morning, everyone. Felicia Montalanco. Um, I love what everyone has said, especially Jonathan, about saving. I think a lot about, you know, what of, what does a single mama need, uh, to take care of her and her family and, you know, a, a parking ticket, not breaking the family, um, so being able to save, um, and have that emergency fund, um, and take care of themselves and future generations and not stress. Uh, thanks.
Bettina? You're on mute. This happened to me last time, so if you log out and log back in, it, it fixes it. So we'll come back to you. Um, Leah Lee, Leah Seavy?
Yeah, hi. Yeah, you got that right. Thanks. Um, I'm, I'm gonna agree with what everyone said, and I'm going to include what I think a living wage shouldn't be. And this might sound a little controversial, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I think a living wage shouldn't include, uh, those jobs that are meant to be, um, jumping off first jobs entry level, not just entry level, but those jobs that are designed to be your very first job, um, in the workforce.
Helen Wong? Helen had sent something in saying that she was gonna be traveling. I don't know if it was just for agenda setting or for this meeting also, but we'll come back to her. Bettina?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, great. I agree with everything that's said, but I, I like this also to say a single mom with children that, um, that she or, or single parent with children can afford comfortably having the children, having childcare, having housing, and not having to worry about emergency situations. So I like, I like the Alice data too, because that looks at that. But having had a single parent, I like that as one of the guides for living wages.
All right, so I'm gonna go back to see if Debbie Dennis is here. And one more time for Heather Fitch. All right, so it looks like I'm the last one, and I would define living wage. Uh, I worked in for-profit for many, many years, and then when I came to St. Vincent de Paul, I was shocked because there were people that worked for us that were on food stamps, that had, um, section eight housing, that had to come to us for energy assistance, all of those things. So I, I'm, I love what, uh, Dinesh put up there for Alice, because I think that's a very, um, holistic way of defining what living wage is. And I also loved what Mercedes said, because when we were doing energy assistance, it was all about the AMI. So average median income. So tying it to average median income would be a really great idea for us. It's all yours, Mercedes.
Thank you so much. I'm wondering if our legislative members would like to check in. Uh, Representative Conrad, I think I saw you on our participant list.
I am. Good morning, everybody. I'm glad to be able to make it back. Glad the session is over, so I can be here. And, you know, in thinking about the living wage, for me, I went back to Maslow's hierarchy and to look about where a living wage would put somebody on that hierarchy. And for me, it makes sense. That second level of safety needs, personal security, employment, resources, health, and property. Again, there's a little bit of ability from resources, which is, I think, somebody mentioned about how can you pay a ticket without breaking the bank? How can you do some of those basic things? And just to get some of that psychological comfort and know that you've got, um, what you need to go forward. So to me, that, that makes sense. I look forward to getting into the Atlas, because the other side of that, that I, I'm interested in hearing the conversation today, regionality has this look throughout the entire state. And how would, how would DAS or any of the other agencies go through recruitment if they have multiple agencies throughout or organizations throughout the state? Are you gonna pay one organization a little bit more than another one for the exact same job? And how does that work with pay equity? And is that something to consider as well? So I'm very interested in how the conversation progresses today, and I thank you all.
Thank you. And Senator Campox, are you here? Okay, doesn't look like it. All right, thank you all so much for checking in on that and kind of getting us settled into our topic for today. Um, we're gonna jump into two minutes of public comment. Um, if you would like to provide public comment, um, I think you can use the raise hand function or, uh, maybe put something in the chat. Oh, Katrina! Now, we definitely want to capture you. Please, uh, Katrina, um, uh, our check-in today was, um, how do you define living wage?
Ooh, that's a good question. Um, living wage, uh, I, enough to be able to survive in whatever area you're living in. Um, and survive doesn't mean like robbing Peter to pay Paul, um, to make sure that all your bills are paid, but actually being able to pay your bills and have enough for food, for water, for gas, for medical expenses, et cetera, um, which I know bumps the number up significantly. So I think a good marker would probably be wages that allow housing costs to be thirty percent or less of somebody's, um, take-home income, not gross, but take-home income. That's what I would define as living wage.
Thank you. Okay, now on to the public comment. I tossed some hands, so I know we've got people. Um, so we're gonna go ahead and give you, um, two minutes. I'm gonna put, just gonna put a little clock over here on my side so that, um, I keep track. Uh, Jim? Are you able to unmute and wanna go ahead and start? Kick us off?
Good morning. Can you hear and see me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Um, good morning, uh, task force, and thank you all for being a part of this important work. My name's Jim White. I'm the Executive Director of the Nonprofit Association of Oregon. Appreciate what you're doing here today and what you've been doing over these la, of the last few months. Um, I think we can all agree that, that government grants and contracts should not perpetuate poverty in Oregon, and that those grants and contracts should provide enough funds and flexibility to allow the nonprofits that they're granted or contracted to, to pay livable wages and benefits to the workers that deliver so many essential services. We believe at NAO, there are two main ways that this task force can help address low wages in the nonprofit sector. The first is identifying procedural and administrative changes in the granting and contracting processes that lead to more government resources for nonprofit wages. Specifically, we would encourage the task force to institute a de minimis fifteen percent indirect rate, allow nonprofits to choose a payment method that doesn't strain their finances the way that reimbursements and often the late grant payments do, provide bridge funds, advance payments, or no-interest loans, allow flexibility in contracts and grant agreements that permit more funds to be used for wages, and other types of payments that are currently not permitted, perhaps fundraising for uncovered costs. Um, also adjust automatically the grants and contract funding levels to coincide with inflation rates, so establishing some type of a COLA system, a cost of living adjustment system. We also believe that you should create a statewide nonprofit office charged with being an all-of-government approach to assisting nonprofits with interactions with the bureaucracies of government. This would include assistance with grants and contracts, streamlining the systems, and coordinating state and nonprofit partnerships. There are similar models for all of those above suggestions, um, that I've made, and they can be found in other states, and NAO is available to help point to these specifically. The second way, so I said there were two, the second-
And so I'm so sorry, Jim. We're gonna hear your second one, and then I'll need you to wrap up.
Okay, the second way is to identify a mechanism for determining a statewide standard of living wages and benefits. We believe that in 2025 legislative session, that you should recommend immediately establishing a wage floor for jobs at nonprofits, uh, that are paid through state funds. Secondly, you can, um, begin a process to determine the feasibility of some type of wage board system to develop an orderly process to raise wages and benefits that can be phased in over, uh, as accounts can, um, take on that burden and budgets each biennium. So I'll wrap it up there. Thank you for the time, and I'll be standing by if you have any questions.
Thank you so much, Jim. Um, and then uh, another hand, Andy Nelson.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Hopefully you can hear and see me. I'm Andy Nelson, Executive Director of Impact Northwest. Our mission is to prevent homelessness. We work with more than thirty thousand people in the Portland area. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. We've all shared the experience of spending hours building a jigsaw puzzle, only to find that we are missing a few of the last pieces. It's disappointing. Despite our intentions and efforts, we actually never solved the puzzle. Unfortunately, this is an apt comparison to how nonprofits experience contracting with the state of Oregon. Too often, we try to provide much-needed human services to Oregonians, only to find we are left without the pieces needed to solve the puzzle. Impact Northwest contracts with several state departments. The outputs and outcomes required by these contracts, divided by the total amount awarded, leaves us short of the actual cost of providing critical human services. We're left with two choices. One, use our precious unrestricted revenue to offset costs, essentially buy the last few remaining pieces, or pay low wages. Basically, move forward with an incomplete picture. Given the systemic underfunding of state and local contracts, our unrestricted dollars go fast. At Impact Northwest, we have about one and a half million to offset thirteen million in public contracts. The result is, we often have no choice but to resort to option two. Now, paying low wages has several negative consequences, many of which you all just pointed out in your introductions this morning. For Impact Northwest and other nonprofit organizations, what paying low wages means, we experience high turnover and delays in filling positions. Vacancies mean reduced services for Oregonians and financial challenges for us. The reality is that the state's contracting system no longer serves the needs of Oregonians. We're not solving this puzzle. That's why I urge the Oregon Legislature to pass an Oregon Nonprofit Fairness and Contracting Act. I also put this in written comments, so that, um, these details, uh, can be, can be part of the written record. This is modeled after similar legislation in California. And the legislation would modernize contracting by requiring fair wages and benefits, as the state does in other contracting processes, extending multi-year contracts covering necessary administrative costs, making other changes to suit the needs, the real-time needs of nonprofits. The demands of the state and nonprofits are significant. Let's make sure we all have the pieces needed to solve the puzzle. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Andy. And then I think our next person is Rusty.
Can you see me and hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. Okay, my name is Rusty Stahl. I am President and CEO of Fund the People, the national initiative to maximize investment in America's nonprofit workforce. I want to offer three reasons why Oregon grants and contracts should offer decent pay for nonprofit employees. First, government needs to stop undermining grantees by underpaying their workers. Much of government funding across the US dramatically underpays the real cost of services, and grantee nonprofits end up having to underwrite the government. This is fundamentally backwards, unfair, and unsustainable for nonprofits and for government itself. If you lose your critical partners because of funding itself, if groups collapse, uh, that is extremely expensive for everyone. Now, the most financially healthy nonprofits out there have indirect cost rates averaging twenty-nine percent. And recently, the Ford Foundation, MacArthur, Hewlett, and other philanthropic funders increased their indirect rate costs to match this reality. They've set a standard for reality-based funding for foundations. You in Oregon can do the same for the states, for state governments. So many of us are watching around the country to see you become an exemplar of that. Second reason, let's end worker shortages and secure the great talent we need to deliver services to our communities. Nonprofit burnout is a pandemic itself today. Recruitment and retention are the number-one problems facing nonprofits today. Uh, you know, seventy percent of Oregon nonprofits have job vacancies. Sixty-seven percent of those vacancies are service delivery jobs, and forty-four percent of Oregon nonprofits have more vacancies compared to before COVID, and twenty-seven percent have longer waiting lists for services. Third reason, improve outputs and outcomes- Third reason, improve outputs and outcomes of services that government provides. Every funder wants results, the number of people served, the positive changes we can achieve. But to get better results, we need to look upstream. What creates great program outputs and outcomes? Strategy and capacity. What creates great strategy and capacity are people. What ensures great people? Mission-driven work matched with good management, decent wages, and working conditions. So why doesn't government support good wages across the country already for nonprofits? Well, nonprofit workforce has been invisible. When Social Security passed in nineteen thirty-five. Uh, uh, the work performed at charitable corporations was excluded from the definition of employment. When Obamacare was written, legislative staff admitted they didn't think of nonprofit employers when drafting the bill. When Congress responded to the COVID pandemic, they left nonprofits out of PPP loans until we all mobilized to make that change happen. So we need to do that again. Nonprofit people are nonprofit programs. No people, no programs. Poorly paid people, poorly executed programs. None of us want that. Let's make sure we have great people, great programs. And we to do that, we need to offer great pay. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rusty. And just looking really quick at the list to see if we have anyone else. For public comment. I'm not seeing any new hands. I see an old hand. Okay. Um. Yes, thank every thank you, everyone, for the testimony. I think that's the most people we've ever had come to public comment. So I think it's just a good indication of how important this topic is. Um, okay, so for the next part of our agenda, we're gonna jump into our agency presentations. We'll take a break and then we'll do a little bit of a um look ahead, a look back and look ahead. Cause we are um pretty far, I think, into our listening sessions. We on- we're only gonna have one, maybe two more. Um, and I think the next meetings will also start to incorporate more and more time for us to discuss. And then as we get into the June, July, August timeframe, we're gonna be writing. So we want to make sure we take a little bit of a look back on what we know or should know to this date and what we still have to come in. So we'll spend some time for that at the end. Um, agency presentations, um. I'm gonna kind of put people on about a twelve-minute clock. We've been doing ten and fifteen. Um, so we have a few a little bit fewer presentations today, so we can maybe do a little bit more. But I also want to make sure we have a lot of adequate time for that break and that look back and look ahead. And we're gonna use the chat the same way we've been using it in the last couple of presentations. If you have a follow-up question, please name the department and then what your question is. So that that way um we can get those questions to the departments after the presentations for follow-ups and clarification. And within kind of that twelve-minute timeframe, if anyone's presentation does run short, um, we can use a few minutes uh for live questions. But it is helpful, I think, if we have the questions written in the chat um so that uh we can also get responses in writing. Um, so I'll call up Department of Early Learning and Care to kick us off.
Thank you. Um, just trying to get my screens all set here so that I can. Make sure I share the right one. Um, let's see. All right. So thank you, everyone. Um, these presentations have done a lot to inform my own thinking around grants. And um as well as my procurement partner who's here and is, I really appreciate being allowed to present and to hear others speak on that. Um, so for this this month, we've been asked to talk about practices that will support living wages. And um we're taking our slides and pretty much going through the questions and our understanding of what was being asked. Um, so the first question was about making requirements for minimum service delivery. Um, the calculations we use and then inflation and COLA for wages calculations. And primarily to do our calculations, we use cost modeling for various programs, because we do have a variety of programs. Uh, we look at industry standards. Excuse me, um, projected, the projected FTE that it's going to take to do these programs. Um, and we roll in our administrative cost policy. So we do have an administrative cost policy at Delka fifteen percent, which would be the same for some of you who don't know the term. It would be the equivalent of an indirect rate. Um. Our inflation and COLA rates for any of the funding that we request does come from the legislative process. We don't typically request inflation on COLA in our request for funding in the first place. Um, our distribution of funding is based on data review, which includes things such as the populations and demographics. Of the of the communities we serve, uh, family and child characteristics and access. We get a great deal of our information from our early learning hubs, from research that we do as an organization. And research that we pay to have done. Um, we also get information from our applicants when they do their requests and talk about their readiness. And give us information about what it takes to do the work. And then for some of our programs, we have an established funding formula that is used to determine funding. Um, to the question about adopting the uniform guidance, um, and what O A O R S or O A R would would allow or disallow. Um. I would really have to do a thorough bit of research on the O R Ss and O A Rs to think about allowing and disallowing. Um, we do utilize them quite a bit when thinking about our own. Um. Our own guidance for grantees, although we don't follow it for our non-federal grants. Um, uniform guidance does have a couple of benefits, including centralized guidance, so that our grantees would all have the same. Thing, no matter what grant. So we have grantees who have multiple grants with us, and their core guidance would be the same. And allow for consistency in our agency. Some things to consider is that not even all federal grants follow the same guidance. There are sections in place to address differences in some of the different programs. Um, some of the things that we currently allow with state funds could become unallowable, or at least need a state carve-out section. About about that particular item. For instance, there are um some programs that we administer that do allow for the purchase of vehicles with their state dollars. But not with their federal dollars. Um, also, the variety of funding could impact the application of guidance. How to determine what guidance applies to what pot of money. And usually in the absence of guidance, or in or in the case of competing guidance, we go with the most restrictive as a practice. Um. Some of the things we would need to do to think about this is to evaluate the impact of the uniform guidance on small businesses. Because while nonprofits are the bulk of our grantees, we do have small business grantees. Um, primarily small childcare providers and early learning providers. We would need to evaluate the appropriateness of the uniform guidance with the grant and the pot of money. And then also look at what resources would need development, both for our internal staff learning about this, because we're not all versed in uniform guidance. Um, as well as what grantees would need to then learn and be brought up to speed on. Um, and the question about agencies inviting grantees to co-create RFPs. Um, this is not something that we really do. There are some considerations. Conflict of interest is a big question when it comes to giving someone an advantage. If you're participating in the creation of a grant. We we have a lot of concern about having an advantage over someone who wasn't part of that, who then is also applying for that grant. Um, we do look at ways to get other community input. We have areas of input, such as our rural advisory committees. Um, currently, we have some going on with the procurement process. We also do them with program implementation. Uh, we take on post-a-ward surveys to help inform how we can do better, both for our processes, as well as for the the grant programs themselves. And then, as I mentioned before, we have ongoing research projects that help inform uh help inform our community input. We have, as an example, um, we have our equity fund project that gets input from our equity fund grantees. On how things are going, and we take that information and use it to try to improve our relationship with the grantee. Um, and our program improvements. Agency funding request. Um, the elements we use for agency funding request. Um, we start with our continuing service levels. So what funding would it take to keep the same services that we have? Um, and then we start working with the expected level of service, the number of children and families served in caseloads. And what is our capacity to implement those services? We look at available workforce, um, additional supports. We're looking across the system and not just at one grant program. Um, so we have to look at an early learning system and all the pieces that go into this. Uh, we don't have a lot of product-based grants such, but when we do, it's usually something to do with reports. Um, and then also keeping in mind that the agency funding request is our first pass at what it will take to do this. Ultimately, we end up supporting the governor's recommended budget once all of those calculations are done. And I want to go back to the piece where the legislature determines through the budget process how much is available for inflationary increases or COLAs. And we do provide information to them on what we know, but ultimately that is not part of our funding request. Now, we I liked this question. For what reasons would your agency reject a nonprofit submitted budget? Um, reject is a big word. We will send them back for revisions. What we do review typically um are are the expenses in that budget allowable expenses, and do they support the agreement work? Um, are the administrative costs within the fifteen percent limit? And is the time period for the budget within the time period of the work? Um, those are broad ways of saying it, but we have different grants with different allowable expenses. Um, different work being done, so each budget has to be looked at within the constraints of that particular program. Uh, we don't. Reject so much as we might ask for a revision. We might talk to them about, talk to a grantee about how an administrative. Their administrative cost is above our fifteen percent limit, and so how what can we do to move that? Or potentially examine what they're calling administrative cost to see if we can really clarify. That things are programmatic as opposed to administrative. Um, if your budget is above funding, that that would be a revision we would need to do. Sometimes we get preliminary budgets before we have allocated funds for a grant, so we need to go back and ask for a revision. Um, and then missing elements to the to the budget. If I receive a budget and I don't see any staff, any any personnel costs in there, I'm gonna send it back. And and we're gonna talk about the personnel that are involved, and where are you paying for personnel if not out of this budget? Um, and then when we look at our budgets, we look at the reasonability test, and it's really, what a reasonable person. And I know that sounds like a a loose a loose phrase, but it's the it's the phrase that's used. What a reasonable person see that this that this expenditure or this proposed budget line item does meet all of the. All of the requirements or all of the necessary agreement work. So our agency recommendations for increasing wages and do we have wage minimums? So some of our programs do have wage minimums and targets in rule. And some of our other programs focus on industry standards and benchmarks to address wages. Um, our primary focus has been on teacher and teacher assistant positions. And some of our programs, such as preschool promise and Oregon prenatal to kindergarten, do have minimums and targets in rule. Um, there is a balance to to be had between the independent business decision and state expectations. So we do have some challenges, because many of our gr- some of our grantees um have have CBAs. They also have multiple funding streams that are all coming together to form a uh a program. And so determining which funding stream is gonna help make certain that the teachers and teacher assistants achieve those. Salary targets. Um. It's something that we have to, we have to work with our programs to to figure out. We have had to put some waivers in place because of situations where it's just not possible to meet a particular minimum. Because of the impact on the program. Um, we're very aware that when you set minimum for some positions, it impacts the rest of the program. Because if you're going to raise the salaries of one group of people in an organization, where is the, where is it going to? Um, impact other positions. If you raise teacher and teacher assistant salaries. Would you then raise the school bus driver salary or the janitor salary? And how do you keep things in a more equitable state? Um, so these are some of the challenges we we've had to address. We have developed POPS for Program Stabilization that include wages and compen- compensation, because for our programs. Staff are the biggest resource. They are the biggest part of the program. They are the biggest part of the cost. And we were asked the question the other day, how mu- you know, how many agreements do we have where we where personnel costs are part of it? And I responded, all of our agreements include personnel costs. And I would say that the wages and salaries and benefits comprom- compro. Anyway, I'm not gonna get that word right. Um, are about fifty to seventy-five percent, leaning towards seventy-five percent. Of the money that goes out in our agreements. Um, and. That is everything for me today. And are there any questions or I'm just happy to take the chat?
Um, we do have a few seconds for questions. I didn't see too many in the chat. Um, so I'll just ask the one that I threw in here, was you mentioned the like kind of market and industry standards. Uh, how often do you review and update that?
So what we look at, and I will, I will have to check back on how often that's done, because that's not my work, but I'm happy to find out. I think we do it. It depends, because we get an o- we get a report on Head Start, we get reports on different programs, and then we also look at teacher salaries. But I will get back to you on that question.
That would be great. And if you want, if you do have like specific ones for specific bodies of work, even like an average, like, you know. So we kind of get a sense of those pieces.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much, Del. Great presentation. Uh, next up is Human Services.
Good morning. This is Kirk Rhodes. I'm the administrator of um the Office of Contracts and Procurement, which is a shared services ODHS, OHA. Uh, contract office. And if you'll bear with me, I'll present my slides here. Okay, is that visible?
Yeah, we're looking at your deck.
Good, thank you. It's already. Twelve days into March. My goodness, we're we're ripping forward. Wow. Well, good morning, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak uh about this very, very important uh topic. And um. Further ado, so the question was, when making requirements for minimum service delivery and maximum funding allowed? What calculations are used to determine final requirements and funding distribution of contract or grant, of a contract or grant agreement? Uh, a lot of this is gonna be uh determined upon the funding that's available for this particular work. Uh, that is, you know, uh, you know, as stewards of the public uh trust and 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 funds there. We we are always looking at that. Uh, the intent of the funding is 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 uh important and impacts a decision. Uh, some programs, and we have a hundred and twenty-two different programs across our agencies. Uh, which rep- is representative of about fifteen thousand people statewide. There's a lot of different programmatic uh concerns in in looking at uh whatever service delivery that they're uh sponsoring. In some programs, awards are based on coverage needed across the state. And uh another, you know, one more, uh, you know, per more centralized in a district or county. Um, in others program, the program will review proposals, applications. Award based on proposed services, uh, and those that most match the intent of the program funding. And some awards, uh, they're based on whether it's urban or rural. Uh, or if they're culturally specific or other criteria meet the intent of of uh services and funding. So these are both for contract and for granting, you know, these are general, there's there's. They're a bit of a common denominator of uh, you know, some areas, and there are some that are very specific to uh the federal grant. And there are some that are very specific to the federal granting that we do. And most of the granting that we do is federal monies. Very, very little is general funds. For ongoing contracts or grants, are inflation and COLA for wages and benefits specifically calculated into the next fiscal year, agency budget requ, requests, excuse me? This really is determined by program and language of the original solicitation of this, you know, contract or grant, primarily contract in this case. In the PSK and IGA, intergovernmental agreement, and the PSK is a personal services contract. There's the following language. This exists, we were able to find this in, in our template. And it states that ODHS may periodically amend any payment rates throughout the life of the contract proportionate to increases in the Portland Metropolitan Consumer Price Index and to provide cost of living adjustments if ODHS so chooses. So this is, you know, in, in a situation where COLA would not be required and directed by the legislature. This is a provision. It's a, it's an escalation clause within our template language to where during the life of a contract, a vendor can come back and say, you know, this, this line item is, is, is busting us and let's take a look at it. And typically that discussion starts with, you know, a, a presentation of some sort of, of budget and, and the line item that particularly in this, in this case would be, you know, extraordinary and not foreseen at the execution of the contract. And so this was the only CPI that we were able to really locate in our, in our template historically. And that is referenced as far as we know. So any negotiation of increases in rates to implement a COLA will be directed by the Oregon State Legislature. In addition, ODHS may periodically amend any payment rates throughout the life of the contract to meet current market conditions. And this again is contingent upon the budget. You know, that's the yin and the yang. It's, it's the left and, and the right guardrails is we have to, you know, live within our budget and, and the state as well. We do not have this language in the grant template. So this is really a contract-specific dynamic here. If state of Oregon adopts federal laws, including uniform guidance in Oregon grant making, what ORS or OAR would allow or disallow the use of these guidelines? Anytime we use federal monies, we adopt through the, through the use of those monies. There were required to the notice of grant award. The funding documentation will prescribe what, what, what the, you know, the guidance is. So when we use federal monies, we are, are bound to the requirements in the federal documentation. So that is, that's pretty much, you know, and this is the OAR that, that prescribes it. Federal funds and being involved, we just, we have to abide by their requirements. Okay, if your agency invites grantees to co-create RFPs, please tell us how this works. So this is, the, this is really, these are the two kind of milestones here or checkpoints. And one is OAR 1252460635. And during the research phase, there's actually by state law, there's quite a wide berth of communications that can take place and should take place, in our opinion, between the, the agency and the private sector, both for profit and not-for-profit. For profit for the, the public good. These are, during this time, we will use RFIs, requests for information. We'll have conferences and discuss, you know, the nature of the service delivery, how to best do it. We really want to know, especially with regards to contracts. You know, the granting part suggests that our partners are already doing those things that, that are advancing the mission, you know, across the state and, and that kind of thing. So we're supporting in grants. And the, and the language of a grant itself is supportive in nature. It's, you know, it also requires that there's not substantial agency involvement. So with a grant, we're actually supporting an ongoing mission of some sort activity. With contract, we're not. We're paying for deliverables and, and it's an agreement that, that is much different than a granting agreement in a contract under the ORS 279 series. So we want to know in the case, especially in the case of a contract, we want to know if, we don't, we don't presume that, that, you know, the, the states or programs know how to do many of these things that we're, we're needing to do, you know, in and, in and of ourselves. So we want to reach out and understand what the best ways to do this might be. And that really lends itself to what we call a request for applicant, or a request for information, which is pre. Now, during the research phase under this OAR, we're encouraged to do, you know, market research and have discussions. Once the solicitation and contracting starts, all the communication at that point would be delimited between potential proposers and those who would propose and a single point of contact that's in the, in the state contracting office or in the ODHS contracting office. ORS 279B 040, that really is a prohibition about developing a statement of work, a statement of work or, or a, a, a solicitation with, with a specific vendor in mind. So that would be prohibited. And so if, you know, again, we can work with the private sector and we should work with the private sector. However, this is a prohibition against developing a, a specific, you know, RFP, whatever, the solicitation that ends up tailor-made for a, a, a particular vendor. So anyway, and that's a good prohibition. We don't, we don't want that. We want fair and open competition. Okay. Does your agency request funding based on outcomes to be achievers, funding based on some other calculation? This really would be, we have several hundred programs and it would, really would be program-specific. You know, we have, you know, home care commission and adult foster care. There's, there's just a myriad of different programs and, and activities that this, our office would not see that. This would really, really be program-specific. For what reasons would your agency reject a nonprofit submitted budget? We really like to work with our, our organizations and our proposers. And, you know, if there's something that is, you know, amiss early on, you know, those are, there, there's a period where questions can be asked and, and a lot of stuff can be answered during the solicitation period. But typically if the budget came in over the allotted amount of budget for the project, we're, we're stuck to the appropriation, you know, left and right limits there. So we have to make sure that everything is within that. Indirect costs are more than the amount allowed. We're very encouraged by the OMB's move to, you know, take the federal de minimis from 10 to 15. And that is, you know, based on quite a bit of research from Office of Budget Management. And that would be tied to our federal granting. So currently it's 10 and that would go to 15 in the event that that's passed. Proposed expenses are outside of the scope of the agreement. An application or proposal failed to meet or pass items. And this again would be for, not only for nonprofits, for profits, and this would be for contracts and grants. These are, these are typically the, you know, the, the, the least of which we, you know, we would, we would have to reject. Does your agency have recommendations for increasing wages through your partnerships with nonprofits? I would say some of the things that we have heard, you know, through the nonprofit association of Oregon, there's some great ideas out there. Ultimately, you know, this is a legislative decision and is closely tied to appropriation. But there's a lot of great, great ideas and there's some great ideas in other states. But anyway, I think, I think maybe a starting point could be, other than Portland, having a CPI in Portland, there could be a CPI tied to, you know, air code. Something, you know, because we, we do, we're involved in, in delivering services across the state. So that seems to be something that people are talking about, that's something that's reasonable.
So Kirk, we're at the end of your time here. So if you could wrap this up?
Absolutely. Any questions?
Why don't you, why don't you tell us what was on your last slide? And then I, yeah, go ahead.
So do you have any wage? Okay, thank you. Do you have any wage minimums? We're not aware of minimums. These are, Home Care Commission, for instance, negotiates minimum wages with the union. We've got Oregon State Hospital with the nurses that work there. The, so it, it's just across, but as far as minimum specifically, it, it's, we don't have that as a template standard across the board requirement. Questions?
Thank you so much, Kirk. So we won't do any live questions for this one, but there are a couple of questions in the chat that we'll send to you for responses in writing. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mercedes.
And then next up, we have the Oregon Health Authority.
Hey, everyone. Good morning. This is Melissa Hanks with the Oregon Health Authority. I am getting ready to share my presentation with you. All right. And I'm having some bandwidth issues this morning, so I'm going to go off camera while I present. But let me know if you need me back for any reason. All right. So I am happy to be here to talk to you today about how the Oregon Health Authority is working with living wages for employees of nonprofit organizations. I'll try to be as fast as I can here. But all right. So when we are making requirements for minimum service delivery and maximum funding, what calculations are we using for final requirements and funding distribution? The calculations we use are often based on the funding available. That's what we start with, but that can also include variables like how many grantees there are, if there are any maximum funding limits involved, and if there are priorities for allocating resources equitably across the state. So if urban versus rural is one that we work with quite often. The final funding distribution is usually determined during the negotiation process and the, the deliverables are negotiated so that the effort to resources ratio is as equitable and feasible as it can be. We usually use previous year's findings to develop future years of funding so that we can use the most current information to develop those requirements. And that includes maximum funding limits. And specifically, our Public Health Division is developing a CBO funding formula for the 2527 biennium. One example of those maximum funding allocations, there was a Public Health Division recently had a maximum limit based on the size and the scope of the proposed project and all of the organizational capacity. In 2325, the max was 250,000 per grantee and that was informed by the work that they had done so far. For ongoing grants and contracts, are inflation and COLA for wages and benefits calculated in? Like everyone else has said so far, OHA receives legislatively budgeted inflation when our state budgets are approved, but that inflation isn't typically passed on to grantees. This is for a few reasons. It's usually a programmatic decision. The program needs to decide to do it. And we have many grant administrators who may not be aware of that and how to do that. Agencies should establish standards for passing along that inflation to grantees. And so that's something that we recommend doing when we receive general funds. In past legislative sessions, OHA has requested and was denied increased grant resources to support pay equity, access to fringe benefits and just general inflation that impacts our grantees. So it is something we have pursued in different divisions in the past, but not something that has been approved. And there's ongoing work to fill these budget gaps. If the state of Oregon adopts federal laws, including uniform guidance, what ORS or OAR would allow or disallow? All right. So Oregon and OHA, we don't have a choice to adopt federal rules. We have to follow federal rules when there's federal funding involved per that lovely OAR that Kirk has referenced for you. Grants aren't subject to Oregon's procurement codes related to competition. The requirements as stated by the grantor, the folks with the money, they do apply. The requirements are usually defined in the letter of award. The federal granting agency requirements are definitely defined in the notice of award. And when we use state general funded grants, we do follow the uniform guidance as a point of reference when we develop our expenditure criteria and requirements. So we are exactly following it in some cases, depending on the funding. Our state general funds are based on uniform guidance. When there's a deviation from those stated requirements to treat the agreement as a grant, it moves the grant into a contract and back into a competitive environment. So it's really important that we make sure that grant work stays in the grants lane and contract work stays in the contracts lane. And grants are subject to DOJ legal sufficiency if they're greater than 250,000. If our agency invites grantees to co-create the RFGPs, tell us how this works. And I will note, the question was about RFPs, but we were talking about grants. And so we, we are very specific about the difference between an RFGP and an RFP and an RFI. Grantees don't often participate directly in creating RFGPs. The target or the priority populations would be involved in the initial framing and development of the scope of work, but not making the actual RFGP itself. The advisory groups that we have for these grants usually include representation from the community who advise on the scope of work and the requirements included in the grant applications. And some programs have included partners and existing grantees, but not applicants for that grant to participate as grant reviewers. So really important to note here that we don't have grantees reviewing and approving their own grant applications. Does our agency request funding? Is it based on outcomes to be achieved or is funding based on another calculation? Yes, grants tend to be outcomes based because they target grantee activities towards goals for public benefits. So by their nature, they're based on the outcome and not necessarily on the amount of service provided in a time period. Public health requests funding based on outcomes to be achieved through their public health modernization effort, which helps them invest and modernize in the public health system. The agency request funding is also based on availability of resources. That includes both legislation and policy, the existing capacity and infrastructure that grantees propose to accomplish their work and the feasibility of the available resources to cover the cost of supports for the work. So basically looking at it and applying a reasonable acceptance to that. For what reasons would OHA reject a nonprofit submitted budget? If it includes allowable expenses, if it doesn't meet requirements that are outlined in the template instructions, if the overall proposal didn't score high enough during the RFGP process to continue, if proposed expenses are outside the scope of the agreement, the personnel proposed isn't connected to the work, if partner entities are absorbing a significant amount of workload without compensation, that's considered too. If staff aren't provided with access to health insurance, if the salary offered seems lower than regional averages, if the indirect costs are more than the amount allowed, and if supports associated with the deliverables haven't been included. And basically if it, if the application or proposal failed to meet any of the past fail items in the RFGP. And our agency recommendations for increasing wages through our partnerships with nonprofits. Salary should be reasonable and comparable to national and/or Salary should be reasonable and comparable to national and or regional averages for the role, whichever one is higher. We should visibly support pay equity efforts. We should support and implement federal rules for the de minimis rate increasing from 10 to 15%. We should, as I said before, pass along that inflation we receive at our general fund budgets and make sure all of the grants administrators know that that's something that's happening. Using a living wage calculator is a starting point for conversations and just to make sure it, this is an important note, using that for the minimum to start, not using it as a maximum to limit people and how much we're going to pay them. Empowering grantees to determine how much of an FTE and salary is needed for the work. Letting them use funding to support salary and fringe benefits for personnel. Considering differentials for work that involves significant lived experience, things that are trauma facing or involve social, emotional, and cultural, they will work. Providing technical supports to the nonprofits and our CBOs, especially the emerging organizations, so that they have parity in knowing how to do the above activities and how to continue standardizing best practices that are driven and decided by the community. All right. Any questions?
Looking in the chat, I don't see anything. That's fabulous. Yeah. And you came in like three minutes under. So it was a very efficient presentation.
If anybody, well, we rely a lot on, on our ODHS counterparts too, because we share our C and P office. Jordan Kennedy is here from our public health division and Steve Phillips is here from OCNP. So Jordan or Steve, if there's anything I've missed that you'd like to add, please go ahead. All right. Thanks so much, everyone. I will be prepared to answer any questions you think of that we get in our spreadsheet later. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Higher Education Coordinating Commission.
Morning. A set of timers. I'm going to try and stay in there 12 minutes this time. I'll share my screen with our presentation. Getting someone to acknowledge that they can see my screen.
Looking good.
Good. Okay, great. Thank you. Well, good morning, everyone. I am from the Higher Education Coordinating Commission, the procurement manager. And just addressing the additional questions that we've received regarding supporting living wages for employees of nonprofit organizations. So when we do request or grant applications, a lot of our score criteria revolves around meeting the legislative purpose or the purpose of the federal funds, whichever the case may be. And you know, a lot of applicants do their best to really maximize the, the budget and the activities that they are proposing to do. And that drives a lot of our evaluation committees' decisions of funding which proposals as opposed to others. And so obviously, for the same amount of money, if we're rewarding a million dollars to, to grantees, if, if one is doing more project activities or achieving more of the intended results, they, they would be obviously favored compared to the, to the other. We don't really have, to my knowledge, our scoring committees don't factor in, you know, this nonprofit is, you know, lower staffed or higher staffed, and therefore their, their final award should be adjusted accordingly. More or less, the process that we do in the evaluation stage is that we receive the proposed budget and the project activities. And usually that's our starting point for grant agreement, negotiation, discussion. I would say a vast majority of the time, we just straight accept what's proposed to us in that application. Occasionally, we will have to negotiate, you know, if a particular purchase is not allowed by restrictions of the federal funds or for some other reason, or we, you know, try to negotiate down what a particular line item we might think is too high, but that's pretty rare occurrence. Usually the starting place is exactly what you give us in that application. As far as ongoing grants and contracts, we don't have a mechanism for COLA increases or wage increases. It's just not part of, we don't, we don't have that mechanism. We don't ask for that when we ask for reoccurring funding to, to increase that. Regarding uniform guidance, we, I have yet to see a notice of award that HECC has received as a recipient or sub-recipient. Sometimes like our partner agencies like Department of Education or ODHS will, you know, receive the federal funds, their award of the funds, and then they transfer it to us to give to, say, a community college or other allowable purpose. I have yet to see a notice of award that does not include requirements to comply with uniform guidance. The two CFR 200 set of regulations. So that, that was an interesting question for me. And to see my colleague say that sometimes they don't have it in their agreements or subject to their federal law. When we write a state funded grant agreement, we don't include uniform guidance. I believe I've heard in the past that some of our grantees, like certain workforce boards, or maybe all of them, will often apply the concepts or principles or requirements of uniform guidance even to their state funded grants, because it makes it easier to not have two different like accounting systems, right? But one for federal funds, one for state funds. So they, I heard, I don't know this directly, that they apply that same methodology to, to both flavors. So I don't, I'm not aware of a state rule or statute that would allow us to avoid uniform guidance when that's a condition of federal funds. So, and I had a typo in the slides that I submitted previously. Not, not a double negative. We don't, this is just reiterating what I already said, which is we don't include federal uniform guidance when it's state funded grant, wholly state funded grant. We try not to blend the funding sources, federal and state, although sometimes we do. And that, I imagine, is much more problematic from the grantees perspective in having to, you know, track two different, completely different funding sources. So we, we try very hard not to do that. So regarding helping create, well, it says RFPs, as my colleague noted. I am treating that as request for applications instead. We don't have guarantees really participate in the development of the specifications for that solicitation document, as my predecessor said. That would be kind of a unfair inside advantage to them. There, so for the request for applications, the grant opportunity process, we try to borrow the concepts from the procurement code, even though the procurement code doesn't apply. So to that end, there's a statute that states any participant, any vendor participating in developing the specs or score criteria can't apply, they're prohibited from applying for the contract opportunity in that case. So we borrow that concept for grant applications as well. We do, however, solicit as much feedback as we can from the industry that we're looking to solicit. So, you know, we get a particular legislative bill that funds a new program. And we reach out to those sectors to ask them, okay, we have this legislation. You know, what could that look like for you? So we're, it's an information gathering that we, that we do to see how that will kind of work in practice. And we use that information internally to develop our specifications for the solicitation document. So we, so we do involve them kind of at the very beginning infancy stages for information gathering. We do not request funding. I had to double, double check this with our director of, of operations. We don't request funding from the legislature based on outcomes achieved or other calculations. I do suspect that our ability to continue to receive reoccurring appropriations or, you know, confidence in standing up a new program are dependent on how we've done in the past. And, and we do report to the legislature for all of our state funded programs, how, you know, what did we achieve with the money that they gave us? So I, I think that is a consideration, although we don't request, you know, we did so well with this program, please give us another half a million dollars. We, and we'll, you know, achieve, you know, 50% more. We don't, we don't do that. In our grant agreements, we very often put in targets or expectations for the project activities. So some grants, for example, say, let's say it's an apprenticeship program. We want the grantee to have at least 20 apprentices in the, you know, calendar year that the grant is effective. What's the consequence if they, if they fail to meet that or the benefit if they exceed that? It doesn't change their award. So but, you know, obviously the, the latter makes us all look better. The, the former, being short of the goal, the intended goal for those funds helps, I think, inform the grantee and the state for, you know, maybe making better realistic expectations for, for what those funds can do. As I stated before, we, we typically, the starting place for our grant agreements is to take the budgets that are submitted in the applications that you give us. So we kind of only slightly modify those, you know, in, in the negotiation phase, if, if at all, which is, like I said, kind of rare that we do that. So when we issue a notice of award, it's conditioned on successful negotiation of grant agreement. And we, we procurement and our program staff reach out to grantees to, to engage in those discussions, whether it's, you know, using the, the proposed budget and project activities, the starting place, or needing to modify that. So some recommendations, we heck across the board pretty uniformly use for state funds, a 10% administrative cost rate. I suggest, you know, the, what would be nice is legislation stating, you know, state agencies should adopt a minimum of 15% for state funded ones. When it's federal funds, we don't have a choice. We have to, we have to use your federally current federally negotiated cost rate agreement, if you have one. If not, it's the de minimis, de minimis 10%. That, I think, will be more challenging fight for all parties involved to, to try and change that at a, at a federal level. So I kind of focus on the, the state funded aspect. Barring kind of uniform application to state agencies, increasing, you know, well, one, setting a minimum percentage for administrative costs. The other alternative you can do is go agency by agency. I know our agency would probably more, be more than happy and receptive to meeting with a, with a work group or a group of interested parties to discuss that and, and maybe create an agency practice of doing that. Unfortunately, there are so many agencies in the state that that, that would be a long fight. And by the time that you got to the end of it, you would probably need to increase it even more, right? So it would, I imagine that would be a consistent struggle. Didn't make my torment. Just last point that I had was we don't have wage minimums in, in our grant agreements. We, we just, we don't. Are there any questions?
So we do have a couple. I think we'll take one and then the other one we'll send to you in writing, but one of them was, so for federal funding sources would allow de minimis, but the state would not?
So state funds, we well, no, we borrow, we borrow the 10% as well for our state funds. Occasionally, we will make deviations from that both directions. So I can think of a few instances with tribal nations that we have provided a higher administrative cost rate with state funded grant agreements. And we've also had, well, that's, I think federally funded. We've reduced the, the administrative cost rate to, it was like half a percent. But that was because our program and federal accountant determined that particular, very, very specific program, federal notice required that. So that's the only one program that I don't think impacts hardly anyone else besides community colleges.
Okay. Thank you so much. So we do have a couple of other questions in the chat that we'll send to you. Representative Conrad, I really like your question, and I wonder if we can actually make that broader to any agency who would want to answer that one. So we'll send that to heck, but I think put it out to maybe the other agencies, if anyone else wants to weigh in on that question. So next step, we have, I believe, sorry, I need to take a look at my notes really quick. Okay, Department of Education is not able to be here this morning, so we're going to skip them and go to Oregon Housing and Community Services.
Good morning. I'm Laura Alomarney. I am Assistant Procurement Manager for Oregon Housing and Community Services. I'm going to go ahead and turn my camera off because I'm noticing a lot of lag. Oh, and I don't know if that's me or if that's something else, but we're going to go ahead and do that here in just a second. I want to see real quick if this is presenting for you. Are you seeing this?
Not yet. We're still just.
All right. Let's try that again. I'm not sure what's going on there. Well, I'm going to get off. And I'm just going to share my screen this way. Are you seeing it now?
Yes.
Okay, let's get to the appropriate slide. So again, supportive living wages for employees of nonprofit organizations. Our first slide, as we're going to be kind of similar to DHS and other agencies by the funding sources. For us, it depends first on the funding and where it comes from. Our funding is primarily federal for our grants. Each program will have different goals and criteria for service deliveries. As a large portion of our grants are federal dollars, we don't worry too much about where, what I'm focusing on here is, is more federal money as opposed to state money. And I've given a couple of examples over a couple of different programs. Homeless Services, for example, our program guidance typically, the program guidance is typically what drives the service delivery, but the funding allowed is dependent upon legislation, current appropriations, and the determination of award types. ESG has a limit for the maximum amount of an award fund that can be used to support a service. And we cannot use more than 60% of the award to support emergency shelter and street outreach, outreach work. So things are done in that context. Aside from this, we don't utilize any calculations to determine final requirements. Those calculations are used to determine the award to each TAA region. And from there, the guidance informs what is and is not allowable. The intent is to The intent is to ensure that there are flexibilities built in to allow the agency to utilize the funds in a manner that is responsive and meets the community need. For housing stabilization division, this is our second example. For direct awards, funding determinations are made by allocation formula. In conjunction with the data and research department, a formula based on the community services needs and region is produced. The most recent example was with tribal partners in the 2123 biennium. We had allocated nine million for the tribes and homelessness funding. And we based that formula on tribal enrollment numbers at the time, the rent burden at the time for the different geographical regions. We also started with a base amount, which allowed each of the tribes to start with a $750,000 base and then calculated the formula for any further funds based on those factors I just mentioned. A third example is for navigation centers. We had had $12 million in funding and we structured on a base amount of 1 million. Then what the current homelessness numbers were, population and rent burden. In order to incentivize navigation centers to offer specific services that were necessary in their various geographical areas, like day-to-day drop-in centers or behavioral health services, we then offered an additional $250,000 for each additional service that they could provide. There were three types of services, three types of services available to award at the time, I believe. And they, each type was between 200 and $250,000 per biennium.
Laura, before you continue, I'm wondering, so you have, you're in kind of like just the regular view and there's also an extra bar. I wonder if you can maybe close that extra bar just to make it a little bit bigger. Okay, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. For ongoing grants and contracts, our inflation and COLA for wages and benefits specifically calculated into the next fiscal year agency budget requests. At the statewide, our statewide budget development process accounts for this for agencies specifically, but we don't typically budget for that at a grant or contract level. The grants, grantees will typically develop a budget for the biennium that is approved as part of their scope of work and it's based on their formula. It's also based on those specific needs within their particular scope of work. So often our budgets will include that already. Our budgets will include that as far as services that are service level agreements. That will be something that's figured out at, you know, the grantee level when the agreements are entered into. We have not specifically added any COLAs or adjustments to grantees' fundings in the biennium. The only, there may have been amendments if there were funding increases or if there were legislative mandates, or if there was a new program requirement that might need to be addressed and adjusted. But ordinarily, we ordinarily, we're not adding COLAs. So with regard to adopting uniform guidance, we have not been aware in the way that we conduct business of any any statutes or rules that would hinder or help in any way as far as following that advice. The, we follow the federal uniform guidance for most things as we do a lot of federal granting. OHCS follows statute and rule that is agency and program specific. We also exist a little bit outside of the State of Oregon Public Procurement Code and the DOJ model rules. But we do lean heavily on both to inform our process to keep it equitable with what other, what other agencies and programs do across the state. Invitation to grantees to co-create RFPs. This has been covered really well with some of the other presenters. It's a very, very similar situation for us as well. Prior to the agreement phase, there will be a lot of community and partner input, a lot of outreach. Program staff will have interactions with various partners and, you know, that could include potential grantees, gathering information and researching program needs and and availability for resources. But once we get to the point of actually developing specifications or statements of work, we are constrained by ORS 27B dot 040. Because if you are, if you are a contractor and you are providing input into what a RFP or request for application is, that is perceived as having an unfair advantage and you would not be able to, you would not be able to be a person to bid on that. Does your agency request funding based on outcomes to be achieved or is the funding based on some other calculation? In general, we do. OHCS's agency request budget for funding is almost entirely based on desired outcomes. The budget request also uses experiential knowledge to anticipate costs to meet desired outcomes that may or may not have specific KPIs when those outcomes are first introduced. In this particular context, our budgeting, that would be a situation, going back to the previous slide, where our budget would include costs related to administration, COLAs, inflation, or any of those other items to address. And our, one example here is ARH, which is affordable rental housing. Their budgetary needs are greatly informed by housing development goals and per unit costs based on a variety of factors, local to municipality, rural, urban, any of those, any of those factors. For what reasons would your agency reject a nonprofit submitted budget? The main three reasons why our agency would have rejected one, and these are the ones that seem to come up the most often, is reasonableness, and this goes back to that, would any reasonable person, what would a reasonable person's view of this be? The ability to perform it, a lot of times there will be applicants who just don't don't have the bandwidth in whatever capacity to be able to actually perform anything that would be within that agreement or be able to perform all of those things. Another really common reason would be alignment with the scope of work. Very often, there will be other things that they would like to do or other opportunities that might, that they might be also involved with that aren't part of the scope of work that that particular agreement is looking for. So those are the big three, but there are a lot of other reasons that a rejection could occur. A lot of those have been mentioned also earlier, like inconsistencies with how many personnel they have reflected, meeting certain yes or no criteria that is part of the programs, excuse me, part of what the program has in the request for application scope, which I mentioned. Does our agency have recommendation for increasing wages through your partnerships with nonprofits? Some agencies will ask for wage data for staff who have, would be working on grant activities and what the required minimums are. These are one of the, one of the ways that we would decide if there were perhaps inconsistencies with the personnel that they have listed in their budget. These are mostly for the jobs that are, that tend to be, tend to be lower paid, not full-time jobs. Aside from that, aside from that, that's really where we, where we focus on that. As mentioned earlier, most of the grant budgets that come in do, are very, very clear and concise on what they expect their budget to be around personnel. And they do take into consideration a lot of that information around COLA and cost of living. And that's sort of preloaded for us when we're actually evaluating agreements. Do we have wage minimums? Other than I mentioned, we, we don't, not codified or memorialized in any way. If there is a specific program or agreement that requires addressing that, then they get addressed in that context. And that is what I had. So are there any questions?
We just had one and we have about a minute and a half, so I'll go ahead and do this one live for OHCS. Can you expand on the definition of reasonableness?
Reasonableness. Does it make, does it make sense? I'm, let me, let me take a look at, reasonableness means a certain thing as far as granting. So I'm going to, I would like to be able to provide you with that exact definition that we, how we define that within the agency as far as assessing for reasonableness. If that's something that I can provide.
Yes, please feel free to take that question back and send us a response in writing instead. That's always the risk with a live question, right? You're never sure.
And I'm going to leave a significant chunk of it out if I try to, try to do it right this second.
No problem at all. Thank you so much for the presentation. I don't see any other questions in the chat for now. If we do get any more, we'll send those to you in writing.
Thank you very much.
And then, next up, we have Department of Administration to wrap us up for this section. We are doing incredible amount of time. We're going to have so much discussion today, y'all. It's going to be exciting.
Well, hi, everyone. Debbie Dennis with the Department of Administrative Services. Our presentation will be very short, as it was last month. A lot of the, because DAS doesn't do very many grants and they're all legislatively directed, we just don't have a lot of content and response to these questions. So I'll go ahead and get started. Next slide, please, Amy. Okay, so this question was around calculations and determining requirements and funding distribution. And as we've discussed in previous presentations, all of the grant amounts that DAS distributes are set by legislative language, so we just, we don't have opportunity to do much funding calculating. And then we also don't have ongoing grants. These are one-time distributions. So the questions around inflation and COLA just doesn't really apply to the work that we do. Next slide. Federal laws and uniform guidance. So we do not at DAS have any statutes or rules that give us that type of granting authority. Our granting authority comes directly from the piece of legislation that directs us to distribute the grant funds. Next slide. Co-creating RFPs, we don't create RFPs for our grant money. Sorry, I feel like I'm being really repetitive, but we don't, because we don't, you know, we don't get to make these decisions. We don't, we, we don't invite grantees because we're not creating those types of RFPs. I could, I could digress just slightly here if it's of interest, if you want to go back to that slide, Amy. In the procurement space, so if we're not talking about grants, but if we were talking about contracts and procurements, there is a, a rule in place that prohibits, in most cases, firms that are planning to submit a proposal are not actually required to participate in setting the requirements or developing the, the RFP. There are some cases where maybe we would send out an open invitation. We've done this very recently with some DEIB consulting work that DAS wants to create a statewide price agreement for. And if we open an opportunity to anyone and everyone who wants to come in and help us shape the, the scope or the requirements for an RFP, then we have some opportunity to do that in sort of an open and transparent way. But we are, what we're not allowed to do is go to known experts in the field and consult with them and ask them to help inform the requirements or the scopes. But again, that's not for DAS, that's not on the grant side, that's more on the procurement and contract side. Okay, next slide. Funding calculations, same answer as before. We don't request the funding and the amounts are given to us by the legislature. Next slide. Okay, reasons for rejecting a budget. So we have those three types of grants that DAS distributes. So for general fund grants, we don't ask for budgets. For lottery revenue bond grants, we do ask for a spending plan and the total project budget. And the grantee has to demonstrate that they would be able to utilize and spend the funds in accordance with what the legislature intended within 36 months. So that the project funding remains secure. So it's, it's not a sort of an evaluation of the budget for the grant, but it's more about, do you have a plan to be able to utilize everything you'll be given? And then for the ARPA grants, they do submit a budget so that we can monitor progress. If the budget needs to change, then we just work together. We don't, we don't reject budgets. So we just work together to modify the budget if needed. Okay, next slide. That's all. I promised, I told you it would be fast.
Yeah, and let's see, taking a quick look, I don't see any questions for you at this time. So thank you for that. If any questions do come up to folks, you know, again, please continue to use the chat for that. We're going to go ahead and take like a whole long, like 18-minute break and come back at 11:00. And when we come back at 11:00, we'll do our little look behind, look ahead. We'll also chat, I think we'll do just a little quick debrief on these presentations before we get into the look back and look ahead, since we have a good amount of time to do that. And then we may also, in our look ahead, we're going to include two pieces. We're going to include some DOJ specific questions we want to put together in a standalone memo for them as well as kind of the next couple of, the next presentation like we've been doing. So just to give you a little anticipation there, but everyone, please take a nice long break. Definitely look away from your computer and we'll see you back at 11:00. Definitely look away from your computer and we'll see you back at 11:00.
Your call has been forwarded to voicemail. The person you're trying to reach is not available. At the time, please record your message. When you have finished recording, you may hang up.
Hi, this is Katrina Holland calling from the Urban League of Portland. We just purchased a building from you guys.
You are, you're, you need to mute yourself.
Thank you. Thank you for the save, whoever told me that. I had no idea I was unmuted. Thankfully, it wasn't a weird call, just business.
Righty. If you're back, if you could turn your camera on or just give a little thumbs up, so we know who's here and who we're waiting for. If we have critical mass. Fantastic. So because we have the luxury of a little bit of time, I want to take just a, let's see, maybe 10 minutes or so, maybe even 15, and just hear some folks' reflections on the presentations. What did you feel like you learned? What was most interesting to you? What was most helpful? Any questions you're still asking yourself? No kind of too much limitations, but just love to hear where folks' heads are. I'm happy to start if any, because I have lots of thoughts. I want, I'll jump right in and say, I was really surprised by the comments that happened in multiple presentations that said, you know, although we, the agency, get a COLA and inflation adjustment, we do not pass that up. Still assessing how it makes me feel, but I really appreciate knowing that and it, it makes things make a lot more sense. Felice, that I go ahead.
Totally agree. I think sort of, we talked about this at the agenda setting meeting, but for me, what keeps coming up is just like the amount of discretion that's, that staff and departments and agencies have. And how the heck do you navigate that as a, as an organization? And it's not fair. And I'm, I think the intent was probably wonderful, but the impact we're seeing is significant and very concerning, you know, not just for the COLAs. I'm, I'm also thinking about, sorry, another thing that's coming up for me is the, when we think about kind of like recommendations and, and allies in the legislature, like, does the legislature understand that they really need to put in their bill, like, this, there needs to be a COLA, like that literally needs to be a part of the bill. So I, I feel like there's an opportunity with helping legislators understand this level of discretion and how important it is to like, put this in a bill. I hope that made sense, but thank you Mercedes, as always, and I thought that presentations were super helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, that, I think that's a great question, because there was a lot of reference to the legislature being the one to actually make the decision. And I don't know if I've ever heard legislators talk about their responsibility in that way, that like, they are the ones who are setting whether or not there's COLA involved in contracts. So I think it's a good question. But Representative Conrad, you're on next. Tell us what you thought.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, you know, so much of what we talk about in the appropriations process. And there are a number of ways that appropriations come about, but some of, when we go for the granting, it is programmatic, but we can't bind a future legislature. So we're only looking for two-year chunks at a time. Now, some of these programs clearly are going to be ongoing, but the amount that's going to be happened or be appropriate in the next biennium may be very different depending on the economic outlook and the forecast. So really, we're only looking at that two years. And as some of the agencies talked about for their POPs and some of the things that they've got, what are they requesting to be able to look at these programs? And clearly, some of what I pulled away, it's the KPIs at that programmatic level. How do we know we're getting that value? What is that bang for the buck that we're actually getting? And is it being delivered? And so if anybody's ever gone and wants to go pay attention to some of the subcommittees, if you go to the Human Services Subcommittee, listen to some of those presentations, listen to some of the, what happens, particularly if you go back to the long session. And it might be informative, if you've never done that, to hear what we hear as legislators and to hear what we ask and what we want to see going forward. So that COLA piece, yes. But we only look for a two-year timeframe and we rely on the agencies to come, give us that information, let us know what they're asking and what those programs are actually going to be caused. But then it goes into the Ways and Means process, right? It goes to the co-chairs and goes to that full Ways and Means Committee, and they make the final amount. Ways and Means Committee, and they make the final amount. So even though an agency might come and ask for X, they might get a little bit less than that. And then, so how are they going to adjust for the COLA? And that's why my question was looking at that 15%. Either it's, you're going to reduce services because you're going to be paying more, or it's going to increase the amount of those allocations, but ultimately you're going to have a number of decrease in those programs that are going to have grant funding. The dollar can only go one place and we have a limited number of dollars without having to go through taxes, which I clearly don't want. And I think most people don't want more taxes. So it's a very involved process. And I'm happy to talk further about that and/or if we need to make some connections for some Ways and Means folks to have that conversation. But legislature, we're definitely part of the problem and the solution.
Well put. Thank you. Felice, go ahead.
Sorry, I just meant to, and thank you Rep Conrad, I meant to mention the 15%. Like, I feel like, you know, for those of you remember Senate Bill 606 talked about 10%, but the feds are now saying it should be 15%, which is great. And we're seeing foundations across the country increase it significantly and having using numbers based on the size of the organization, like the size of their budget. So I really, you know, when I think about our recommendations, like 15% should be the floor and it should be allowed to be negotiated from there regardless of the type of funding the, the, that's being passed through. So I, I think that's going to be really high on our list of recommendations.
Thank you Felice. And I think, you know, one of the things I think about is how much there's a reliance on like the line item budgeting. And that it sounds like there are some programs that have risen to a level of sophistication, or whoever decided that they have risen to a level of sophistication that get to do outcomes-based budgeting. Where like, in order to serve this many kiddos, in order to serve this many parents, in order to build this many units, this is how much money I need. And that's respected. And then there are other places where like, that's not even, it's like, we just get the peanut butter and we're trying to spread the peanut butter. And like, whatever, whatever happens, happens. And kind of everything in between. So I do think that's really interesting into the 15% that, I mean, that is feeling like a strong thing that's rising to the top. And one thing I want folks to think about, because it was a question in the chat of like, how would 15% kind of like change some of those underlying conditions, change, you know, service delivery and things like that? It also makes me think of like, well, then I could just get rid of the line item in my budget that's like advertising communications, because then I can just pay the communication staff with the admin rate. I don't have to nickel and dime it in order to make sure I can advertise, you know, this program's accepting new enrollment. It's now just part of my agency budget. You know, I don't have to put a line in there for printing, because I can just pay my communication staff to print the flyers. You know, and I think like, we have to line items, so many of these teeny tiny things sometimes because of how much distrust and constraint we get. I really interpret it as distrust. I know, I really appreciate all the staff here who are being super available to us and doing a lot of work. So I don't want you to be like, I don't think you trust me. That's not what I mean. This is like, we're structural, right? Talking structurally, that I feel like a lot of these rules are put in place because my agency is not trusted to do well with money. My agency is not trusted to build outcomes. My agency just happened to do well on the RFP and now you have to deal with me. Like, sometimes that's how it starts to feel. And so it doesn't feel like it's a partnership. And I think that's some of the stuff we're unearthing here is like, that these structural things are creating different implications of our partnership than what's actually true. Because it feels like so much partnership in these presentations. It feels way, way different. And so how are our structural things maybe not quite aligning with what clearly are our values around partnership? Mary, and then we'll go to Bettina.
Okay, so in the public comments, we had Rusty who was saying the average admin indirect cost was 29%. So now we're saying, if you do not have a knicker, a negotiated indirect cost rate that would allow you to, that would allow you a higher rate, then you can do a minimum or a maximum of 15%. That's the change in the de minimis. So that 15% is what have to cover HR, payroll, the required audit, the requirement, as they said in some of their presentations, that you have health insurance, your requirement that you have regular other insurance. So all of those have to be fit in that 15% if you don't have a negotiated rate. So going back to what Rep Conrad asked is looking at reduction in services that the dollars have to come from somewhere. But I think for too long, that somewhere was on the nonprofit.
Oh, Mary.
Sorry. To bring in to bring in through your donations or in St. Vincent de Paul's, our store revenues that we have, or other recycling things that we have to raise money. And we have to use that to make up the difference to do a program for the government. And that's the, that's the part where we really need full cost recovery and how do, how do we get there?
I'll get going. Yeah, I, I was just really encouraged by, you know, what I'm hearing about discussing what's program cost and what's admin cost, what's allowable, what's not allowable. But that's also where the crux is in the definition, you know, how can we make it less complicated to say, this is a cost that is for this work and what's not, because that's what we're dealing with. Like Mercedes said, you know, we, we have to put printing there, but do I know if this printing is for audit or if this is printing for, you know, program supplies? And do we really want to collect those individually? Because that's what I, you know, we, we do an admin allocation, but it is, some of it is operational, because I don't want to cut account every printout by program. So I think, how do we, how, how do we take this real desire by the states to buy services and to know what's for program and be confident that we're, you know, not building a palace outside our door that's not for program delivery? But make it easier to define those program costs. And for me, some of those overheads, like total personnel costs, it's not about the salary, it's the whole package. Yeah, I read that one report that was in our in the submissions, that was from, from Portland, that looked at the different pay rates in business and not-for-profit in state and in local government. And local government was $10 above nonprofits. So our local government is our competition in many ways for our staff, you know, it also showed how we are training so much workforce for people who then go to the state and local government. So how do we acknowledge that in total pay? Because I think that's what we want to say is total package. And that, I, I saw that report that was done in 2023 was really well done in terms of what are those issues? And what are the recommendations? I think there's a lot of good stuff in that report to take to our recommendations. But I think there is a real intent, so how do we cut, cut through this? You know, work, the roots that make it hard.
I would love to hear if there are any reflections on the wage minimums. We also heard in our public comment about like establishing workforce boards. You know, part of that, I think, is to some degree helping to protect organizations from themselves. When there was pressure for like a race to the bottom to say, yeah, sure, I can do this for $10,000. Oh yeah. And I, I, yeah, I could do it for five. Sure, I can do it for four. Yeah, I'll do it for two, right? Like, you kind of keep getting that pressure. And once you've said yes, just to our agency partners, once you've said yes and accepted a grant agreement and people come back and want to negotiate money out of it or change it, it, it becomes almost impossible for you as the organization to walk away. Like, you may really want to say, okay, this has gotten too complicated or too cut down for me to really keep doing it. But it is so hard to do that because it's never just that one program. It's like a thread you pull that affects other things within your agency as well. And so like, it's so, it's so hard to figure out like, how do I come into a negotiation as an equal partner? Because I think for most organizations, coming into a negotiation, you feel very disempowered and, and feel very like, I have to try to get to yes. And that may result in agreeing to something that later on doesn't totally work. So I can definitely see a wage floor as working as like, we're not going to let you negotiate yourself into the red just because we really want you to say yes. And because we've already approved your grant application and we really want to do this work, like, we won't let you negotiate yourself into inefficiency, because I do think that that can sometimes happen. Any other thoughts around like wage floors, wage minimums, wage boards or anything like that? Yeah, Felice.
Yeah, the, I mean, everything you said Mercedes, I, you know, what's so critical with something like a wage floor is that the contracts reflect what that floor is and are covering that cost and rise as the wage floor would potentially in, increase, right? Everything I've learned about wage boards, I find fascinating and as a, this like separate advocate to ensure wage equity. So I'm, I'm super intrigued by it. It's, it's something, my understanding is it's something Oregon used to have. And so I, I look forward to maybe learning more and I'm thinking about how that could address some of these issues, especially like, I don't, I wouldn't want every nonprofit to like, have to negotiate with each contract, like this is, we've talked a lot about, like, early on about administrative burden. So could a wage board address some of that administrative burden? I'm just thinking out loud. Thanks Mercedes.
Any other final thoughts? Anyone on the agency side want to share any kind of reflections after getting to hear your presentations from the other agencies? Okay. So, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Hey, thanks. Hearing from Jim White with the Nonprofit Association of Oregon was really great. I've worked with Jim in the past and all of his points were super valid. And I think it would be really great to take a look at the individual things that he said to see if there's any of those that we could push forward.
Thank you. That is a great little segue into our look ahead and look back. So we're going to hit these little items right here before we cut out today. So want to kind of first take a, a quick think about like, where, what have we learned in so far and where is this information stored? So this is our webpage. For the modernizing contracts and grants. So this is where all of the agency presentations are stored, also all of our public comments. So when Jim, for example, said that he had shared some additional information, you're going to find that here in the view, the written public comments, right? And then it will download it for you. And you can open it up and see all of the public comments and nice little spreadsheet altogether. Then the meeting information. So this is also where if you're like, you know, what, what, what was that first? You know, memo from DAS about like, it's right here, you can jump right back to it. Or, you know, what, what about the survey that folks did? I want to take a look at a glance. This is also a survey that we shared. And we're going to do this one again and we'll look at it again. But this is an opportunity then to take a look at what do people say at just kind of like a yes, no level? And so when you click on these, you can download those as well. And it's going to look too teeny. We'll try that later. I was going to show you what the survey results look for, but it's super small. So I encourage you to go here and click on that and take a look at what those look like. So this is just our kind of repository of our information. You can also go back and look at recorded meetings if there was a meeting that you missed. Just want to remind folks of this because there's a ton of information stored here because we have done requested a ton of information from our agency partners and they have delivered so much in these documents. And then as we've gone through this work, I've started to try to keep a, a list of kind of like potential recommendations. I haven't really been sharing this because it's mostly just kind of my notes. But as we're starting to get kind of closer to the end here, I want to just share with folks some of the things that I'm hearing over and over again. If you are keeping your own notes, our agenda planning meetings are great to, you know, bring some of these things to. But this is really what we're going to probably spend again that June, July and August, really looking at a potential list of recommendations and trying to drill down where we have some consensus in this group or as close to consensus as we can have. So for example, going back to some of our, you know, payment structure. This is the first time the 15% de minimis came up. You know, we talked about how to have contracts longer for 12 months. We talked about tracking consistent payment. What we heard from departments is that they have goals for, you know, hitting payment on time after receiving receipts. And, but they're not necessarily tracking whether or not that's happening. So a recommendation from us might be, we want to see some tracking of that to ensure that payments are happening at a, at appropriate time. At one of our, at our uniform guidance, right? Thinking about what's a standard open period for applications? We saw a wide range of open periods for applications, like, should there be something like a standard open period? So no matter what agency is putting out a call for proposals, everybody knows it's always out for 45 days. That's the rule. Similar to, I think, when you do like a rules advisory, there's like specific days that it has to be posted before it can be finalized, just to have a level of consistency. And then up here, again, that 15% comes up again. This question of whether or not COLA and inflation should be passed on. This question of de minimis, I'm sorry, this question of like wage minimums and things like that. I will note, I also took into account, I tried to collect some reflections and like these conversations that we're having. So we have a good sense of what are things that may be kind of putting pressure on any one of these things. So we had a lot of comments today, for example, about co-creating RFPs, RFPs that it eliminates competition and/or it becomes unfair and, and favoring providers. I think one of the things that it also does is that it, it eliminates some of the partnerships. So it kind of pushes the responsibility of making it work onto the nonprofit partner and eliminates it being a joint venture anymore. Because now you've been approved for an amount of money and for a body of work. And although this is like the government's work, right? This is the work the government has said the people need and we need to deliver it. It's now the nonprofits' work and no longer our shared work. And that's the idea behind co-creating is making sure that, you know, whatever kind of budgets or requirements we put together are real estate and also connected to the work itself. So how do we get that without, you know, without risking this piece, this eliminating competition or being unfair? Because I don't think we want to see that kind of thing. Like, we're not looking to create problems. So these are just like, I've also noted some of these considerations, like how do we get the buy-in needed? How do we make sure we're following the rules appropriately? So this is again, just a little bit of kind of where have we come from so far? And what things have been kind of put on the table as we've started moving, moving forward? So that's where we've been. Any questions about the website or how to find the documents? I want to make sure that that is clear for folks to be able to use that system. So now looking forward, we're going to talk a little bit about a DOJ memo. April is going to be standard contracting and this is where we're going to try to bring back our DAS presentation that we didn't get to do last month. And then May we'll be talking about a mechanism for ongoing review. And this will probably be when we start getting into like, all right, what are your list of potential recommendations? What are the things that have come up for you in these meetings that you really want to see in the final list that we're going to put together in the final product we're going to put together? So you've seen a little bit of mine. And now you can kind of be thinking as we're getting closer to May, what are yours? So we can start bringing those all together. We're going to start, I'm just going to show you all the questions that we currently have for April. We're going to do the same thing in April that we did this month, which is the presentations plus a survey. So when you're looking at, I actually really do want to try to bring up the survey because I think it's just, I want us to look at it together. I'm going to try to do that in a minute. I don't want to do too many things at once. But these are the questions so far for the current presentation. I'm going to leave those up for a moment and let folks kind of take a look. I'm gonna leave those up for a moment and let folks kind of take a look. Okay. And then these are the survey questions and these are the yes, no questions. Um, I'm gonna pull that down for just a minute. I think. I'm gonna pull that down just for a moment because I do want to try to show you the Excel spreadsheet if you haven't looked at it yet. For today. It just looks so teeny. So sorry. If we at least make it look okay. Um, so for this month, if you had pulled up that survey, this is what it would look like. So we've got the agency departments listed here and then their responses to these questions. It's a lot of what we saw in the presentations. It's really just kind of rolled up for more of an at a glance kind of view. So for example, you know, do you have a standard formula that determines the amount of services to outcomes per dollar? You know, and that's where we see the variety, like some people, yes, we're, we're building a formula for how we're spending, for how we know what that money can buy. A lot of people are like, no. It sounded like we're kind of getting the money and then we're figuring out. So based on how much money we got and whatever requirements are in the legislation, what, what do we need to try to put out there to get to those, right? It's almost like a backwards calculation as opposed to a forward calculation on what it takes. We got the uniform guidance. We've got, um, you know, whether or not there's the authority to implement the uniform guidance. It sound like pretty much across the board, folks are only using it when required. So they're not using it um, within their agencies for uh, general funds. Although I think there might've been one presentation that says they will sometimes use it even for state funds. So for the most part though, um, using it for the federal funds only. You know, where we have a nice little mix over here of like some folks have wage minimums, some don't. So one thing we know at that point then is that we are capable of setting wage minimums. Um, some just may be further ahead than others if we were to try to make that kind of recommendation. So this is, this is what the survey is producing. It's just a real high level summary of the things that we're seeing in the presentation. I'm gonna take that down now. Go ahead, Batina.
I just had one question for the next survey. I wonder if we should ask if agencies roll over contracts, you know, biennium to biennium or if they have a easy process for that? Cause we've seen like preschool promise, we've seen that they very easily moved a biennium contract into the next one without, you know, too much ado, if the funding is there. Um, so maybe a question just if, you know, we have the 24 months, but if we also say, do you also roll contracts for what, you know, where you contract for ongoing services? Or in some way, you know, what process do you use? Maybe if it's a, if it's more of a word question?
Um, I'm just thinking about some of the presentations we've already gotten. One of the reasons I think for the 24, asking, you know, do you approve contracts for 24 months or more? Is like that at least gets us, it, it keeps us in the question of like a biennium or more than a biennium.
Yep.
Um, and I think also what we've heard from a lot of uh, the presentations is that it's very difficult to go beyond the biennium. And then although there is work that kind of moves beyond there, all of it is dependent on the legislature and what they, what they choose to do. So I think, um, see, in the presentation, we have asked uh, about bridging. So under what conditions would an agency approve upfront? Or startup funding at the start of a new contract? Or agreement or at the beginning of a new biennium? Though that's trying to, I think, get at how do you, work that you know is ongoing in preschool. We're not gonna one year be like, we're not doing it anymore. I mean, I guess we could, but like, it doesn't feel like it's that kind of program.
So the bridging, yeah, the bridging goes to the fact that, you know, we, we don't let our staff go, you know, at the end of the contract, even if it takes another month or two. Uh, if you were a business, that's what you would do. You would say, you know, everyone leaves. Um, but the state doesn't. So can we, may, maybe can we get more? Maybe we'll just have that as a recommendation, but I would just, you know, I was thinking, are there ways that departments can do this in a way that has the final veto, but it, once it's approved, you know, you just go back on the paddle and move forward um, without big, big administrative process?
We do have a question here. It says, uh, what are the conditions that would need to be present to approve a contract for 24 months or more? And so I think that's looking then beyond the biennium. It's like, what would need to happen for you to be able to even think beyond the biennium?
Yeah.
Cause I know there are that, that work. Cause I know like there are contracts that are, you know, that, that do go beyond the biennium. Now why those contracts are allowed to do that and others are not, I think is the, the thing we don't quite understand. And so understanding what conditions need to be present to even consider that, I think might help if we want to get to a recommendation where we're looking at longer term timelines. I mean, I think, you know, for example, just talking to some folks about like the summer programming, right? And we basically some fun, fun summer and about June. So like as summer is happening, we know we can do summer programs. Like how would we ever get to a point where we can look beyond that, especially when the outcomes requirements that a lot of folks want to see out of summer programming is like better retention in school, uh, better grades, higher graduation rates, basically things you need about four or five years to assess whether or not you've actually made that impact on a young person. Um, but you're doing that with, you know, about three months worth of funding one year at a time. And so we're kind of mismatched a little bit in our outcomes. And I think that's part of that question as well. It's like, how do we get to what those conditions are that help us think longer term? To actually meet the outcomes that I think we really want to see? Any other comments on the, I guess I can put them back up if folks need me to, the survey or the just put that back up again. Again, here are the survey questions. Here's that. What conditions need to be present? Question, the startup funds question. And I'm gonna do one more time on the surveys. These are mostly yes, no. We do have questions here, like if you're using a lot of templates, how many templates? Part of this is also getting at the uh, if we were to make a recommendation, you have to use a consolidated number of templates. How much would we actually be keep asking people to consolidate? Want to make sure we understand scale before throwing work at folks. Um, Donish, go ahead.
Yeah, maybe someone related to this, the scale point you're just making is, did you intend to talk about the DOJ memo in this conversation?
Um, as long as we're, if we feel like we're done with comments on those, I will jump into our DOJ cubes.
Thank you.
Does that big enough? Can folks see it? No, okay. Okay, so these are questions that we've also kind of been collecting as we go. Um, I would love to kind of hear folks' comments on this and what's missing. We want to kind of do this one, I think, in two stages. We want to make sure we're not just ask, we're not just asking what we want to know, but we're also asking it in the way that's gonna work best um, to get, to get the right answer. So what I would like to do is kind of review this together. Um, see if there's any additions uh, that we want to add here. We'll give this to our DOJ partners as a draft and ask them for their feedback on the structure of the questions and the content of the questions. Then at our April agenda planning meeting, we'll see what kind of feedback they may have given us on where they need clarity about what, what we're asking. So we can then finalize the questions in a way that help us get to um, the answers that we're looking for. And the question is set up in a way that DOJ feels like they understand what we're asking them for. Um, so one of the persons we have here, this was around, um, I think, universal applications. Can the state through existing or future law require certain standards across all human service, public contracts and across all jurisdictions? Um, so this is kind of trying to figure out, again, what are the OARs, what are the ORS? Like what are the limitations? Where do those things exist? On wages, um, could such standards uh, be wages and benefits related? Could such standards be wages and or benefits related? If so, what are the limitations on any of this? Could wages and standards apply for all staff at a contracted nonprofit, not only those uh, who are salary outcomes? I think we might want to, this is a really good question. I know this comes up a lot actually for nonprofits. Um, when you get a grant that has like, you know, a 10% increase and one that has a 2% increase, but both of them are case managers. What am I allowed to do from Oregon State Equity Law? Am I allowed to pay these people more just because their contract allows it? Or do I have to meet the lowest common denominator every single time? And I think there's like some regional questions about that too, if we were to create like a, a wage floor, what the regions there would be. Um, another example, can the state of Oregon require pay scales with a nonprofit contractor? With the state or other municipalities? And then there's an example here of like the CEO can't be paid more than X amount, the lowest worker. I think this also probably would help us understand a little bit more about like wage floors, like would they have to be regional, for example? Can we not set like case managers make X amount? Does it have to be scaled? Where are those scales? Um, could state standards require inflation related action? So I think this is maybe part of that. Knowing now that COLA and inflation is not necessarily passed on to grantees and contractors. Um, could the state require that? Would the state have to require that for agencies to be able to do it? Um, so I think understanding where that limitation comes from. Can the state of Oregon require, be required to pay interest on late payments? Though, as we kind of mentioned in one of the presentations, we're not really, like, everyone seems to have like a goal for like, when we get an invoice, we have a goal of a certain amount of turnaround time to get that out. We're not really tracking that. If we were to start tracking that and we saw that there were just like late payments continue to happen, is this a process that can be used to try to, you know, get that, whatever is happening there back on track if there's like a consequence to not being able to hit those marks at some regular clip? Um, are the state of Oregon's various departments in compliance with federal guidelines for indirect rates? I think this is a great question. I think it's come up before. Um, that like when the federal government has a 10% de minimis, um, is, you know, when a state department says we're gonna share that with our contractor, so we're gonna give you 5%, we're gonna keep 5%. Is that, is that actually in alignment with the de minimis guidelines? Um, I think we've had, we have some difference of opinion about whether or not that is true. So getting kind of an opinion on that would be helpful. Can the state of Oregon provide bridge funding, right? So we're talking about that too, like under what, how do we get out of this issue where nonprofits are essentially floating the government for about three to six months until the new contracts are updated? Um, can the state of Oregon create a wage board? So it kind of goes to one of the recommendations we had here. And how does the state, if at all, distinguish between grants and contracts and law? So we've heard a lot about that. I think actually getting it written out um, would be really helpful because we've heard that there are over a certain amount of money. Some departments have to use DAS templates, some don't. Um, some have, like, there's a legal sufficiency standard that DOJ is setting, what things have to, have to go through that or it's anything that doesn't. So we've heard a lot of that in the presentations, the kind of like if this, then that, you know? So getting, I think that written out would probably be really helpful. And then structural, these are some questions we have. It's like, how many grant reviewers does DOJ have? So all these agencies are going to them being like, hey, I've got my stuff. Right? So how much are they actually dedicated to that body of work? Versus how much of it is like a portion of somebody's job and their job is actually something else? Um, what, you know, how much capacity would they need? Um, I think we saw kind of like those timelines, so we might have to refine this question a little bit because I think folks were estimating around like, um, two, one to two months for this. Is that like the standard that DOJ has set? Like we want to do this within two months? Are we trying to make it shorter than that? Is that what drives capacity? So we might need some refinement for that one, but I think it kind of gets to the uh, where like the limiting factors in our process? Okay. Now opening it up, other questions for DOJ specifically? Wait there.
Thanks Mercedes. This is a great list of questions. I just wanted to see for that last question around grant reviewers for DOJ. Wondering if you can ask, I know we got some insights around like that one to two month timeline, but just generally from DOJ, what the average turnaround time is for grants above a certain dollar amount? And then also from their perspective, I think what may need to change within, you know, either rule or statute to potentially make adjustments for any requirements for their review above certain dollar amounts. I'm just curious if we can get a better idea of what like the existing status quo is and how if we made any changes, like would that even improve the baseline?
Can you say that second part again, or maybe drop it in the chat?
Um, yeah, I'll drop it in the chat.
Thank you. Donish, go ahead.
Yeah, and I think this is a small point, but bridge funding is a great one to explore. And I wonder if advanced funding might also be worth calling out on the front end. Not, so the, I could see where bridge funding would fall into that space, but um, maybe between bienniums, for example, but when starting something, uh, oftentimes that's where there's a lot of strain.
So you just want to specify that this is, this is a
Maybe it's advance and bridge, yeah.
Okay. So bridge, we're referring to existing work that's moving over into additional biennium. Advance is new work.
True. Thank you.
Uh, yes, Representative Conrad. Uh, yes, Representative Conrad.
Thank you. Uh, so from the DOJ perspective, one of the things that I haven't heard, my apologies if you guys talked about it last month or January. But it's a pre-approval process. What would that look like from DOJ's perspective to pre-approve an organization? What would their requirements be? What would be some of the things they would want to look at? And then what would some of the anticipated impact be on the backend? Would that actually help expedite the process? Um, in going through this. So just curious on that from, from the DOJ perspective.
If I miss anything in that, feel free to uh, drop it in the chat for kind of what wording you'd like in that question. Any other additions? Okay, I'm gonna bring it down. And then I'll just remind folks, um, if you want like a second bite at this apple, you want to like take a look at whatever kind of comments or feedback we get from DOJ on the wording of the questions, um, please come to the April agenda setting meeting. And it's usually the Thursday at 2 o'clock before um, our regular Tuesday morning meeting. And so you can email Amy if you want to get on that calendar invite and you're not on it. Um, so that'll be kind of like an, an additional time. Like if you're like, I need to marinate on this a little bit more. Uh, but I want to be there and like see what the question, the final questions are gonna be. Uh, feel free to do that. I know we all are taking in a lot of information and trying to manage it. Um, while also then like immediately going from here to like all the other work we've got to do. So, um, with that, I think, I think I saw a couple more in the chat. So I'm gonna grab those before. I lose them. I lose them. Not hearing any other comments or any last edits. I want to say thank you, everybody, so much for your time. I want to say thank you again to all the departments for all of the information that you all are providing. It is so much information. I feel like I am learning just an absolute ton. And I really appreciate the, the transparency, the openness. And especially to the folks who took our question and modified it a little bit so that it was relevant to your department to be able to answer. Thank you for doing that. Thank you so, so much. It, you know, we don't, we don't always know what right language to use to get to the right question. And so instead of people just being like, oh, that doesn't apply to us, saying like, well, it applies to us in this way. So helpful, so, so helpful. Thank you for doing that. And I hope everybody has a great Tuesday and I'll see you next month.
And thank you to Debbie Dennis for always being there with a smile, even when you're doing the presentation. It really brings us up.
All right, take care, everybody.